Call me, order. Everybody rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
Kirby Hall.
Here.
Larry Hall.
Here.
Van Dyne.
Here.
Tudor.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Studer. We have a call.
Thank you. I put up the regular meeting of City Council on November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, is now in session. Council got approval of the minutes from the public's first before me.
Yes, it's, it's like this. Section one.
Section one in here.
Section one.
And there's a lot.
It's on the back, back side of the plan.
first, as presented and having placed on file.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second. Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Studer?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass. Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, next on, Jen, is the public hearing. We have a public hearing for redevelopment on the Tiff. We got that motion.
I do, Mr. Mayor. I move to open the public hearing at seven oh seven P.M. regarding the twenty sixteen amendment to the tax increment financing redevelopment plan and the project for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Facility Terminal Area.
Motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Percy, roll call vote, please.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Actually, such groundwork up, this is the amendment to the Tiff district for the Ridgeport Logistics Project. The board meeting was conducted and notices were sent to all the taxi districts. We did have showing of almost all of them, the college and the county was not here. They reviewed it, they heard the presentation by Mike Weber, our Tiff consultant, who went over this. Basically, the basis of this one is they're removing property that's in the southern section, south of Murphy, and by removing that acreage, they're gonna add acreage, which is on the Cavanaugh area, just east of Cavanaugh, north of Murphy, which is known as the Lardy property, the Armstons, the Reagan property. So, for a Tiff amendment to happen, those were not in the original Tiff because they were off the county. We do know that they have closed, they own now the Lardy Farm and Memorial Farm, which is part of this Tiff amendment, and there's discussion going on with other properties in this Tiff amendment. Ultimately, the hearing is for any of the public to, you know, give any feedback. The Tax Review Board did approve a recommendation to approve the amendment to the City Council, and all notices and all proper publications have been reviewed by legal counsel, working with deputy clerk, and we've met all the obligations per the statute for this Tiff hearing.
Thank you. All right, so the public hearing is officially open now in regards to the redevelopment of the Tiff bonds for the Ridgeport Logistics area. Anybody, does the public have any input in regards to this? Anything, counsel? All right, pretty easy, just take it forward. Pick a motion, close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing at seven oh nine P.M. regarding the twenty sixteen amendment to the tax increment financing redevelopment plan and project for the Ridgeport Logistics Center Intermodal Facility Terminal Area.
All right, motion by Alderman Van Dyne, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Evans. Roll call vote, please.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
All right, Mayor's report, got a few items to talk about tonight. First one is I need a resolution to update the meeting dates for City Hall, dates and times of holiday observances in two thousand seventeen for the corporate authorities.
I move to approve resolution number two zero one six dash one one. Resolution does name the meeting dates and times of holiday observances in two thousand seventeen for the corporate authorities and commissions of the city of Wilmington.
Motion by Alderman Percy, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Larry Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Percy?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer? All yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Also note that City Hall will be closed November twenty fourth and twenty fifth in observance of its one Thanksgiving holiday for this year, and Wilmington Chamber of Commerce Parade and tree lighting will take place downtown on Saturday, November twenty sixth. I believe, what do you think, it's off at six?
Five o'clock, sir.
Five o'clock?
Yes, sir, line up at four.
Line up to four, all right. If you got a truck, line up, see there's Joey line.
Sorry.
Anybody finds out being in the parade, get there early. It gets dark quick, it's kinda hard to see everything. Awesome, but it's always a good time, the kids love it, the downtown businesses.
Downtown is cool, right?
So...
Yes, sir.
Same route. So, very good, thank you. Next time, Jen, as we, may be worse, it may be worse, it may not, this Friday will be Mr. Graff's last day, he's chosen to retire from the state of Illinois, take his life and his skills up to Michigan. But, just real quick, I know we've been done through a lot for the past seven years.
Almost seven years.
And then you've been a tremendous asset for the city. You helped us out and helped us grow in a lot of ways, I guess ways that can't even be documented or even put into words, but, you know, thank you for everything you've done, so.
Mutual feeling, I've grown a lot, I've been down Wilmington, I meet a lot of great people and I'll just, I'll be best.
Thanks, Wilmington. With that, we always have matters of business, government is always pretty lame at times. We did approve the GovTemp's agency firm for bringing in an interim, but in doing so, we also have to approve the temporary employment. Through working with GovTemp, I had the opportunity, as many Alderman have, to meet with Mr. Frank Kaler, I know he wasn't able to be here tonight. He's from Bourbon A, and we need to see if we can get the temporary employment done tonight, so it should be starting next week, so Kirby did that one?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the mayoral appointment of interim city administrator Frank Kaler.
Yes, yep. Motion by Alderman Kirby Hall, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Kirby, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passed.
Thank you. All right, and lastly, we have Wilmington Coalition for Healthy Community proclamation of the Town Hall Meeting for Underage Drinking to Break the Chain. And I could read this entire thing up here by myself, but what I've asked you to do is to bring some of our youth up here to kinda help me read this along the way, so if we could get those out.
The youth.
Just right there, it's like, where's Dan, who's there, and I'm reckoned, where is?
The youth, the youth up here.
And their sponsors.
Yes.
So, real quick, I want to tell you who everybody is. This is Lexi Or, and this is David Snidker, and that's Jay Knight, and that's Joey Or, and that's Justine Davis, and that is Wendy Hill. And then John and I and Deborah Tommy, we kinda fill in the gaps whenever they need some help with some things, and Sherry Michaels, who wasn't able to be here tonight, she is always there for as many needs as she can, so Lexi is gonna start off proclamation.
Whereas, according to the two thousand fourteen National Survey on Drug Use and Health, one in four twelve to twenty-year-olds reported alcohol use during the last month. Underage drinkers are at risk for negative consequences, including lowered academic performance, involvement with law enforcement, risk of violence and sexual assault, and death.
Whereas, approximately five thousand youth die each year of alcohol-related causes, alcohol remains the most heavily abused substance by American, by America's youth, and underage alcohol use is more likely to kill young people than all illegal drugs combined.
Whereas, seventy-two percent of students report that it is easy to get alcohol from older family and friends.
Whereas, Will County reports one thousand eight hundred DUI arrests in two thousand fifteen, Wilmington Place Park reports a minimum of ten ordinance violations for illegal consumption plus possession by a minor of twenty-three.
Whereas, the majority of underage drinking-related deaths are not traffic-related, instead, they are due to other fatal accidents, including homicides, suicides, poisoning, burns, falls, and drownings.
Whereas, underage drinking is threatening the future of our children, we must act now to educate them about the many and sometimes deadly consequences of the early alcohol use.
Whereas, it is the goal of Wilmington Coalition for Healthy Community to address the issues surrounding underage drinking. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed...
I'll read that. She's adorable, she got excited. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that a Town Hall meeting, a Town Hall meeting will be hosted by Wilmington Coalition for Healthy Community on November thirtieth at six thirty P.M. at the Wilmington City Hall, titled "Underage Drinking: Break the Chain." Thank you very much, guys, it was awesome. Do you guys sign your names?
Yeah.
Does she have one sign already?
No, but he has one.
Yes, I have it written.
And we've just handed you guys all personal invitations, so we hope that you'll be there and...
Thank you, Paul. Did you have anything else to report, Randy, I'm good? That was good?
I have anything else.
Very good, thank you. Thanks, guys, very nice kids. All right, citizens' comments, citizens' comments tonight. Or there's... Quiet. Finding zoning commission, next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December first, two thousand sixteen, at five o'clock P.M. Committee reports building grounds, health, parks, and safety, Alderman Percy, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December fourteenth, through November sixteenth at five thirty P.M.
Water Source Streets and Alley Committee, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kirby.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December fourteenth, through November sixteenth at five thirty P.M.
Please announce that, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December thirteenth, through November sixteen at five thirty P.M.
Finance Administration and Land Acquisition, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
I have the first one, Mr. Ten. I move to approve the council panel report in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and one cent, and the October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen collector's report in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars, twenty-one cents, as presented by the city council.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve ordinance number sixteen dash eleven dash fifteen dash zero one, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars general obligation limited tax bond, series two thousand sixteen, of the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois, for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest of said bonds.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Move to approve the J.R. Castle Construction Incorporated invoicing the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred dollars for the Whittles Road Stormwater Replacement Project.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second by Alderman Kirby, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve the fifteenth amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and among the city of Wilmington and Adar Ridgeport Industrial Partners LLC and Ridgeport Partners Two LLC pending final legal review and the memorandum of understanding between the city of Wilmington and Adar Ridgeport Industrial Partners LLC pending final legal review.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second by Alderman Kirby, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to approve intergovernmental agreement between WestCom and individual WestCom members for Starcom Twenty-One Radio Project Financing pending final city staff review.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I move to waive the filing deadline and approve abatement certificates for United States cold storage.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Van Dyne, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the retirement agreement between among the city of Wilmington and Gary Van Dyne.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second. Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
I have number eight on the table for next meeting.
Number nine, I move to approve the Westside Sub-Area Study Proposal as submitted by Shopping Design Associates Incorporated.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Evans, roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and the city of Wilmington for the city of Wilmington downtown plan.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Percy, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twelve dash, why there's not a dash here, a resolution to accept planning assistance services delivered by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning.
Motion by Alderman Studer, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve and award the contract to the low bidder, Austin Tyler.
I would recommend you take this, the main reason is they're still working through the IDOT EDP funding on this project, and we have final payment, and plus the U.S. cold storage payment, so...
Mr. Mayor, I move to, to the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll have final orders. Okay, thank you. Next scheduled meeting?
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
No, you have the first meeting, you said December twentieth?
That's the next schedule.
You had nothing to do with this one.
Yeah, next meeting is the twentieth.
Geez, boy.
Anxious.
You won't be able to worry about it. All right, ordinance license committee, Alderman Kirby Hall, Steve Evans.
Mr. Mayor, first you made up for your chipmunks.
Next scheduled meeting?
The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty-sixth, eight at six P.M.
Let's see, first now, thank you, Alderman, Larry Hall, Alderman Percy.
Yes, Mayor, I have a motion. I move to approve the hire of Griffin Kennett, full-time street crew one at the Public Works Department.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second. Second. Second by Alderman Kirby, any discussion?
We do have the employee here tonight, so if you'd like to introduce you?
I'd like to introduce Griffin to the council and you, Mayor. He was amongst forty-three applicants. We narrowed it down to six. We interviewed six applicants, he filled the position that we were looking for, he had the special skills that helped fill the shoes of Jesus Staub leaving, and he made the costume, this is...
Meet you, Griffin.
Nice to meet you.
I think you'd be a good asset to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please. I got confidence. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Read that right. Roll call vote, Griffin. City engineers report, Mayor, Mr. Zematis?
Thank you, Mayor. Starting with the high-speed rail projects, nothing to do with the Kinky River Bridge, King Street, First Street, and Water Street. I can't update the MOU estimates for that agreement, they're currently negotiating with John and their railroad attorney, too.
But also, talk to him, ask the MOU if they do want to make an intergovernmental agreement. I know we had a lot of debate and discussions about that, are they still aiming toward wanting to do this with an IGA?
They definitely want to do an IGA, that the MOU should be the guidelines and the foundation for the IGA, so we have a phone call, a conference call, I think on Thursday, to work out a couple of the, I think some of the issues that really need to be spelled out, they need letter, letter patch of the MOU, basically. A lot of that's to do with First Street, we want to make sure that the new repairs and development are needed, repairs, not just for emergency repair, but in the project, that there's some mechanism in place for them to be able to pay for that. And while, we're trying to work out some language about the cost of the ones, which might be half there, so the attorney recommended this call to try to work out that language and what they have to work. not just for emergency repair, but in the project, that there's some mechanism in place for them to be able to pay for that. And while we're trying to work out some language on the cost of the ones, which might be happening, it might be water issues. So, the attorney recommended this call to try to work out that language for what they could work. But I think we're at the point where everything seems to be close to probably have the MOU and then have the intergovernmental agreement. I do know the state needs to have the intergovernmental agreement in place, probably no later than March 1st, to make their appropriation bill.
I think that was the biggest reason. I know we talked about the MOU binding, non-binding, and then come to find out from IDOT, they need that IGA as a part of being able to bring their appropriations budget together to determine that. But I think it's also important to note to the council that there has been a lot of discussions back and forth, and regardless, our MOU recommends their changes by now and stuff like that. So, we're still, you know, we've passed it, it's still a working document, and it'll probably go down the course again once we get that through, so...
Yeah, I would recommend to ratify changes that we probably negotiated on Thursday with them.
Okay.
And then get that IGA, hopefully you guys get that, and then IGA is to go down in January.
I think that's just, everybody needs to know that it's still moving, so, but we're still having, we've had our, I would say, challenges, we've had our dialogue over some of the issues, so...
Sorry, Cole. That's all right, no problem. As far as the strip mine, Cold City Road, 53 projects out there, deconstruct ahead, begun some shoulder and pavement work out there. No major lane closures at this time, but as far as the railroad crossing, nothing's going to be done over there for some time. We're still trying to get some information on that as to whether, how long they want to be able to close this thing or whatnot, but no works being done at that time over there in that location. Just simply some pavement and some shoulder work right now. 53 and South Arsenal, the water main project is scheduled to begin in the next couple weeks out there to replace the main out there, extend it farther to the east outside of the road, the wide end project portion of it. There will be some pavement work on South Arsenal Road in coming weeks, do some patch work and some new shoulders and curb gutter out there, but as of right now, we're not anticipating anything being done on 53 until next spring. There's some local work and stuff like that that we're pushing back on and trying to hold that off till the spring. 53 and Payton, the bid opening was on the ninth. We're still confirming some of the funding amounts from IDOT, US cold, and the county right now, so that's kind of why we held off on that approval tonight. On Ridgeport, the Tory Foods, the entrance off Lorenzo Road has been completed, doing some parking lot improvements out there in the south and west side of the property. People out there, you know, they're putting up a lot of the fencing, the gating, the garage shack, and some final grading being done on that site. Mission 1A expansion, the majority of that is done. I mean, they have occupancy now, so they've actually been doing some work over there inside there now, so pretty much just some rent, some landscaping and stuff outside for that project as well. Buck easement, preliminary plan has been completed. The survey group from Hay Associates wants to come out and confirm the locations of the storm structures that we put under Lorenzo Road to make sure that their alignment matches the alignment of the pipes that are currently in the ground out there, so they're scheduled to be larger next week or so to confirm the elevations and possibly have to extend some structure further closer to the river to get some more depth on the actual design of this thing. So, it's being worked on right now. Project again, just masquerading, some, you see the pension pods and stuff like that. It's mostly just dirt movement going on out there. The plans haven't been approved yet, so they're still working at their own risk out there, moving some dirt around. Project Charlie, same thing there. People out there, the houses are all demoed, there's all the... They cut down, taken down by Homer. A lot of just masquerading going on out there as well, but those plans haven't been approved either, so they're still working at their own risk. Deer Creek Estates, couple houses being, foundations being poured and worked on out there to build a couple houses out on the lots that were purchased. Foxtail Commons, they should be out there later this week to start pouring the curb and finishing the pavement out there. They're out there, they've written that cold ground, but spoke with Dee this morning, and they're saying they'll be out there later this week, so that's all I got, man.
Same energy, pardon. Last one.
Last one. While I was trying to make sure everything gets completed before I get out, if not, someone's got to figure out how to do it. Got the Prologis Amendment that you guys approved for the annexation. We've got opposing ducks are ready to close on Friday, so the wire transfer will happen with $400,000 will be in our account on Friday, we'll be in tow. So, that agreement will be recorded, and the new owners of the property, which will be in the local 150, the new owners. And then the last payment for the water flow study will be paid to as part of that agreement, so we'll have another $23,000 coming back into the reimbursement for that study that was paid for by Prologis. So, you'll have, that project has improved. I know it's been probably almost three months before they were able to, you know, finally done, they're going to sign off, but at least we'll have the dollars under our water operations fund and capital fund. And then Colby, they've given some recommendations along with Ryan Foster from the water department along with Karen, I'll put the next step into that. I know the I-9 project, we get updates from WASSO. There will be some additional, you know, work that's being talked about, but all the testing's done, I understand, and all the manholes that have been identified, so now they have to come up with some type of action plan of maybe some of the area, what they have to do, and then video, I think the next recommendation is on videoing certain lines, correct?
Correct.
Hopefully that'll have that point. One project that'll be worked on in the next, probably 60 days, the ISO rating that the fire department received when it dropped down to three, as part of that ISO rating, they also come in and do ratings of our building department. So, the next ISO rating review that's going to happen for the city is code enforcement. And since we have a code enforcement and property maintenance approved, so Chuck Kestley will be working with the ISO review people, and, you know, you'll get a report probably from Chuck in about two or three months, and we'll be going over a lot of things that you guys have been working on and giving direction to the code enforcement area. That does help with the ISO rating, because code enforcement is a lot of times, has to work with properties that are, you know, need to come into compliance, and as far as the ISO ratings go, those type of structures, if you're not doing any type of code enforcement, that can become hazards in our community. So, it's glad to see, the last time they asked to come in, we didn't have a code enforcement program in place, we got a police officer running, so I'm anticipating that's going to help us with our ISO rating in our building department, and which is always a good day for the insurance industry, where they look at a community, where we're in, you know, property insurance, so... So, all the other projects, we have a transition meeting with a lot of the staff, we're with Frank Kaler, so we got to meet the staff, get an outline of who's responsible for what projects, so Frank's kind of, he's outlined who's responsible and what projects are pending. We have about three projects that are currently, you know, in progress, so a lot of staff has stepped up and stated they would take on some of those projects, why Frank is learning what's happening here, and then also some of the consultants will be taking on some of those projects. But they'll be taking on the ones where they get reimbursed from the developers to where I think that'd be very appropriate. One thing I would leave you is a little comment about what's going to go in the next, you know, year, five years. One thing I would just ask to remember, the value of your staff. You know, you have some great staff here, they are very dedicated, they work long hours, which is, you know, part of our job, but they do have the, probably the best part, what I like to see in skills and abilities, they have the passion to do the right thing. And just to recognize, you know, staff on a regular basis, a little pat on the back, a little like tonight, recognizing, you know, what Kobe has done and everyone else. Also, just think about next year's budget. I would strongly recommend, strongly, that you take care of your staff, and to do that, and not to have staff look at other, your pastors, this is going to cost you. So, salary needs to be on your, in your background, and start thinking about that. And one thing that's left that I would like to see happen, if you guys would like to entertain it, is to have Kim Doleo move from the accounting position to a finance director position. And when we brought Kim in, one of the things we did talk about, we brought her in as accountant because of, you know, wanting to move her into that experience that rather was more of a finance background, that Kim had the accounting background. Well, she's proven herself up over the years, especially with the audits, that it's time to, you know, give her the recognition, maybe look at a finance director appointment, you